House and Authority to order. At this time, we're going to recognize the visitors, starting at my, with Ms. Commissioner Lyd on the end.
I made home slide.
Linda Bar Williams.
Gerard Moultrie.
Wanda Vereen.
And now we will have our staff, starting with the executive director.
Dr. Avanzo Bradley.
Bosco Locklear.
Jennifer Manning.
Sheena Sullivan.
Januar Slaw.
Casey Moore.
And our visitors are.
Our Christian Verber.
Shadon and Manny.
September.
All right. Please let the record reflect that we have a qualm for the meeting today. At this time, we're going to do two things. We want to welcome Bishop Chris Brown to the area. He's a new pastor in the area from Sword of Troop. And at this time, we're going to ask him to lead us in prayer, if you will. You can take the podium.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this moment and this opportunity that you afforded us to gather together. We ask Lord for your guidance and your wisdom. Give us clarity as we begin to do the business that you've set forth for this auxiliary, for this housing authority. Father, bless every one of the directors, staff, visitors who are here. And sure, Lord, that all the resources needed and necessary will be found and funded to help and lift our city. Thank you and we honor you. We love you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Once again, thank you, Bishop Brown, for coming to do the prayer and welcome to the community. At this time, we will stand for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda. I second the motion.
You've heard the motion. The motion has been moved and properly seconded. Are there any questions? Are we ready to vote? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record reflect that the agenda has been approved. There is no public participation? All right. At this time, I want, I need a motion to approve March the nineteenth, twenty twenty-four minutes. Everyone have read over it?
I move that we approve the March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four minutes. I made home slide. Second the motion.
You've heard the motion to approve the March minutes. It has been moved and properly seconded. Are there any questions? Are we ready to vote? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed have the same option? The ayes have it. At this time, the unapproved minutes, we want to just table those minutes as we've done in the past due to legality. And so, we will skip item B and move the unfinished business. Looks like we have one new business, agents, agency, operation hours. I need a motion for the agency operational hours change.
I make a motion that the agency operation hours be changed.
I need a second.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question about that. Can we discuss it?
It was brought to, I think, the board's attention that there was some, due to the size of the agency, I think the Wednesday was closed and I think the Wednesday is a half a day, right?
The Wed- Wednesday is open to the public for a half a day, but the staff is here all day.
Okay. And then I think Friday, they're closed and the discussion was perhaps opening more on Wednesday and possibly Friday, opening on Friday as well.
Do I need, um, Mr. Chairman, I want to, um, on Wednesday, Wednesday, the closing to the public on Wednesday, there's a lot of paperwork that the staff has to do. And so, the evening after, the time after lunch for the rest of the day, that's, that's when staff is in their offices doing, getting caught up on paperwork. And so, just wanted to make sure that, you know, what that, for them, that what that was, that they have to have some time to, you know, stay, stay ahead of, on paperwork. And in reference to the Friday off, we, you know, I, I thank those of you who have been here on this board for a while, you know how we have struggled to, to recruit employees. And one of our, one of the recruiting tools that we have that have allowed us to fill some of the positions that have gone unfilled for a long time was the flexibility of having the Fridays off. We, I know we just hired a director of finance who has a child that's handicapped and that helps her. And I know Bosco is the person who came. That was one of the things, I think, um, our personal voucher, we were able to recruit him. It's a very strong recruiting tool. And so, just, just want the board to know if, if we did not have that, it would be a whole lot more difficult to recruit, um, the top quality, uh, employees.
This is the board pleasure. Any more discussion?
I think, um, it needs to be discussed a little further.
No?
I have some questions about that.
So I had a made, we will table for more discussion. And we will try to bring clarity at the next board meeting. So it will be on the agenda at the next, uh, board meeting.
Mr. Chairman, um, we're tabling this issue, I mean, item A.
Yes.
On the basis of, are we looking to collect more data to possibly justify the hours of change? Or why we table it?
Uh, we need to have a little more discussion. I think, um, Dr. Bradley brought something that was, I guess, I never knew as the chair. Um, I'm sure the other board members may have not know that, that Friday was a recruiting tool, but we will table it and have, you know, kind of further discussion, look at the data to see what is going to be, um, not necessarily best for recruiting our staff, but what is best for the residents as a whole, to be able to serve the residents. Um, and so, I understand the, um, the recruiting tool and I respect that, but we have to look at what is, how are we going to serve our residents at best?
And that's, that's why, that's my reason for asking, I mean, what? I, being the resident commissioner, I hear from the residents that they have schedules and things going on in their lives too. And it doesn't necessarily stop on Thursday evening at four thirty. They need to see someone on Friday that they couldn't get done during the first of the week or whatever not. So like you say, Chairman Moultrie, we do need to probably look at it a little bit more, but at the same time, we do not need to lose sight of why we're here and what our objectives are. And that is to best serve the people. In my personal opinion, right now, they are being served, but they are not being served, in my opinion, as well as I think an agency of this operational multitude should be given to the public.
All right. We will take that into consideration. And so, again, we will let the record reflect, we will table item A for further discussion to see what is going to be in the best interest of the resident and the agency. And so, we will ask Executive Director to get the data and try to get back with us before the next board meeting so that we can make a formative decision as to whether hours shall stay. The next item is not a voting item. It is an item where our bylaws let it reflect, let the record reflect that the bylaw says the chair is to appoint committees. And so, I'm going to just take all two, item B and C. And we're going to appoint a bylaw committee to look at our bylaws and look at the EIM along with the executive director, um, to try to see what is in the best interest of the agency in terms of the bylaws and the EIM. And also, the personnel committee. We had a personnel committee where the former chair had appointed, and it was myself, uh, Commissioner Williams, as well as Commissioner Rosa, but Rosa Hollard Mullins. But she's no longer here, so we have to take those two and revise those. So at this time, I want to appoint a bylaw committee and a EIM committee, as well as the personnel. Want the record to reflect for the bylaw committee and the EIM committee. I'm appointing, uh, of course, Commissioner, um, Vereen, Commissioner Lyd, and Commissioner Williams. The bylaw committee will be chaired by Commissioner Vereen. And the EIM committee will be, uh, there will be no chair, it will be just an advisory. And Dr. Bradley will sit on that to advise us as to the changes that's needed for him to be able to run the agency in a proficient way. As for the personnel committee, it is, as I said, Linda Bar Williams has always chaired this, so we will keep the same chair, we will appoint the same two people. So let the record reflect, Ms. Vereen will chair the bylaw and Ms. Williams will chair the personnel committee. And so, we've dealt with item B and D. Item C, it was brought to my attention by the executive director that we are moving to.
A, um, ADP, ADP.
ADP. So as far as the time clock, this is something that we, um, actually, as the board discussed, um, so it really was an old item. We discussed it prior to Dr. Bradley, um, even coming here. And in fact, it was one of the interview questions, how did the candidates feel about clocking in and out? Um, and so, this is an item that, I mean, we really don't have to vote on because we're moving to the ADP. And the ADP requires clocking in and out to keep up with the time. It's something that we don't need to, uh, discuss. So the next item is item E, which is all properties are smoke-free and tobacco and vapor. Um, this came from the resident coordinator. And, uh, before we vote, I'm going to allow her to explain to, uh, the public, as well as, um, the other board members what she explained to Dr. Bradley and I. So she put this item on the record.
Thank you. I always had a concern of, um, public housing being totally no smoking. And after housing stopped acquiring other properties, like the tax credit properties and whatnot, they felt a very different guideline, that you did not have to go by the special guidelines that were appointed by HUD for PHA. Uh, I, I can only speak of the property that I live in, and that is Lakota Cross. That property has lots of structural needs. And one of them is that smoke and whatnot comes from one apartment to another. We have people living there with different types of health issues. With smoke is definitely not a good thing for those people. I was told when I made a complaint, that they had no jurisdiction over tax credit property. It was a whole different thing and the HUD ruling about smoke-free did not apply to that sector. So my question was, and still is, why?
Yeah, I had, um, we had the discussion with Jennifer. Jennifer, could you chime in on, on that?
Um, when Dr. Bradley brought it to my attention, I went and pulled the regulations on it. And from what I've read, um, the only properties that are exempt from smoke-free is your mixed-inex properties. And see, Lakota Crossing is not a mixed-inex, so it shouldn't have been implemented.
Okay. All right. So.
So I guess then, the, um, it's a matter of not so much as making the policy, it's a matter of enforcing the policy. So, um, if we can just try to make sure that we enforce all the smoking policy, I think that would bring some correction to that. Thank you. Is there any more discussion on the smoking?
Mr. Chairman, a question. Um, with it being designated smoke-free and it being forced, are there designated smoking areas or it's totally smoke-free properties?
I will be.
Sir, with HUD's regulation, as long as you're twenty-five feet from the building or any entrance of the building, you can't smoke in any common areas. Um, and you can set up designated areas for smoking.
Excuse me, I didn't hear, you say you can?
You can.
Okay. All right.
So I guess the next question is if this is, do we have a policy in place for, to sanction the people who violate those rules?
Yes, sir, we do. Um, basically, what we can do is we can mimic the public housing's policy that we put in place, where your first violation, you actually get, uh, conference and you get sensation material, meaning materials about quitting smoking. Second violation, third violation, fourth violation, you get fined, you start getting fined up to a certain time, then it moves towards eviction.
Any other question?
Do we have any signs or anything up, um, right now, or we're going to put some up?
Yeah. Basically, we'll actually have to move forward, put them up on our tax credit properties. But on our public housing properties, we do have them, then plus we have the stickers put in the window that, uh, smoke-free could align.
Good. Good. I said, start.
Just enforcing it now, so that's all right.
Are there any more question, discussion? Right? Discussion and approval of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, and your PHA plan.
Okay, if you go to page seven, that's the first page of our PHA plan. And, um, all of the writing that's in the black writing is the original, um, plan. All the updates is written in red. So it starts on seven, and then you go to eight, and then on nine, you start to see progress reports. And I'll just highlight some of the things that, um, you know we're doing, you see we're doing, but that is in the plan. Uh, and exploring opportunities to expand, leveraging private and public funds to create additional housing opportunities. Uh, continue to renovate and modernize public housing units to make them more marketable. Explore, implement public housing and other homeownership. Uh, we, we still, that's still going to be a big goal for us. Uh, demolish and dispose of obsolete housing. So on page ten, um, staff training, um, and exploring opportunities, uh, to recruit more voucher landlords. Continue to collaborate with other entities to provide affordable housing. Um, exploring opportunities to apply for RAD, you know, we're doing that with Oakland Place and Churchill. Um, opportunities to partner with city and county, uh, moving to work. And then we have a new moving to work coordinator. And then on eleven, I'll just highlight, um, apply for more grants, um, purchase land, demolish disposition. Oh, excuse me. Skip that one. Um, plan to construct new homes on scattered sites. Our transition, transitioning to paperless is on hold. We decided not to move forward with yarding. Um, and so, we're currently exploring, um, looking at the expanded options for sacks. And, um, and last one is authority-wide, implementing non-smoking policy, which is, um, what Ms. Lyd was talking about. And this, I think you had, you had a couple of them.
Um, I think the one thing on the PHA that we need to go back and revisit, or, or at least get with council, to try to talk about, um, we need to at least talk about what council, um, in terms of the demolition and deposition and the disposition of Creekside. Um, I think we are moving forward to, um, revitalize and get Creekside back up and running. So we had an application into HUD, um, that we were going to, prior to current executive director, that we were going to demolish Creekside pending the outcome of the mold testing. Um, and since then, we've discovered that, you know, we don't need to do that, so we might need to probably revisit that on the PHA before we submit it to HUD to make sure that they're clear that we're pulling that application back and we don't wish to move forward in, um, tearing down Creekside. So I need to, I need a motion to approve the PHA plan with that one correction, um, if we, uh, if we make.
I move that we approve the twenty twenty-four annual PHA plan with that one correction to, uh, about Creekside to HUD.
You've heard the motion. Um, I need a second.
My second, Wanda Vereen.
Right. The motion has been moved and properly seconded. Are there any questions? Are we ready to vote? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed have the same option? Let the record reflect that the twenty twenty-four annual PHA plan has been approved with that one correction. Item B is the utility allowance.
Yes, we have, uh, as you see on page eighteen and nineteen, um, different, um, utility allowances that we are proposing. And we need the board to, to approve our, our, our proposed plan.
Tell me a little bit more about the proposed plans to, um, a ten percent increase amount, is that it?
Well, you can see for the different developments, it's a different amount for each one of the developments. And, um, it's really not, it really hasn't changed, not on all of them, but it has increased in, in some of them to try to, uh, help the resident pay, you know, pay their utility costs. So, and you can see on Pine Park and Clyde Court, Parkview, you see a ten percent increase. But all the rest of them is the same.
Oh, okay. Okay. I move that we approve the twenty twenty-four utility allowance.
Need a second?
A second.
You've heard the motion, it's been moved and properly seconded. Are there any questions? Are we ready to vote? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed have the same option? Let the record reflect that the twenty twenty-four utility allowance, um, has been approved. Um, item C, which is selection of the auditor's, um, agency. I think that is something that, um, we probably need to table as a board for further discussion. I know that they, um, put it out, but, um, I think there's some discussion that we might need to have in regards to the auditor. And also, I want to say thank you, Bishop Brown, for coming. He shared with us that he had to leave for some other business, but we appreciate him coming. So, um, back to item C. I think that is something that we might want to table to have a discussion among the board and the executive director before we, um, hire a auditor.
Okay.
Um, item C, it is not an item that we, um, have to vote on, but just let the record reflect. We talked about this prior to the executive director coming, um, the board having this on secretary for our own personal reasons. And so, um, let the record just kind of reflect that it was something that was already discussed , um, prior to, I guess, the new board members and the executive director coming on. Item E, which is the, uh, board attorney. We talked about that as well, Dr. Bradley and I. I think we may need to have further discussion about that as well. The agency has an attorney. We just probably need to come together to figure out where the lines need to be drawn between the, the agency attorney and the board attorney and figure out what is going to be the role in, um, both places. And if the board desire to still have an attorney after the discussion, it can be something that we can talk about, if, if the board is all right with it.
Yeah, let's table it.
Right. The next item is the agency report, Creekside.
Creekside, we have one person that we've actually started termination on as of today. Um, they had a voucher, then they were offered a unit. And in the beginning, they said they wanted a unit, then they turned around and said, no, they didn't want the unit. So as of today, we're moving forward with that termination.
On the rehab side of Creekside, we have a contract nineteen nineteen architects. And right now, they have the electrical, mechanical, plumbing drawings pretty much through. We should have a draft of those drawings in the next two weeks. Structure drawing would be another thirty to forty-five days before we have that. And, uh, once we get that, go back and forth and get, get the drawings worked out, then they'll put it out for bid. Basically, what we're looking at doing is, is changing the windows, because that's where any problem that you had in the past was, the main part was the windows. It's got the old metal windows in it, like all my homes used to have. And what you have with that is a lot of condensation builds up. Heating and air union was right up under those windows, so the air from those units and then the condensation of that air staying on your metal windows, then that's where you have a tendency to get some problems that you don't want. But as far as the, the building itself, it's not really that bad. The other main problem is the plumbing. Uh, have, have, have problems with the plumbing in that building for years. The plumbing is in between each apartment unit. There's a little chase wall about twelve inches wide. And all the plumbing for those two units standing is in that chase wall. And so, anytime something breaks in that chase wall or goes leaking, then you got to tear out a wall to be able to get, fix it because you can't get in that chase wall. So we're looking at replumbing the whole building. So we do away with that plumbing in those chase walls. Then the other main thing is, we're looking at keeping the individual, heating and air units in each unit. They're all in good shape, but we're looking at putting in a heating and air unit for the commons area, all of those long hallways and the lobby, the, um, community room and the office. Putting in a heating and air system, central heating and air system in that. And it'll also pull the air and circulate back outside. And it'll also pull the air and circulate back outside. The, when I came down here back in two thousand seventeen and started work, there was no heat in there at all in the hallways. So when you walk out of your unit into that hallway in the summertime, oh, you're just about die. So we moved, we didn't have the funds at that time to do the whole central heating in there in the commons areas and those hallways. So what we did was we did individuals in each hallway, uh, heating in our unit. And that was better than nothing, but it's not as good as moving to that central heating in our unit. But, uh, in talking with the, uh, architect engineers, and I, I agree with them. If we get that there, then all our problems goes away. And of course, in, in, in rehabbing these units, we will be, uh, doing new paint and, and fixing anything else that's wrong in each unit. So when we went back online, the whole, the whole, uh, building would be like new. But as far as the structure of the building, it's, it's good. There's nothing wrong. And, um, they've not come back. What they'll do, once we get the drawings settled and intact, then they'll go, we can do a cost estimation, uh, cost analysis on the project. And I, just roughly, I think you're probably going to be somewhere between three to four million dollars, which is cheap compared to if you move forward trying to replace it. If you was trying to replace that building today, it would cost you probably in the neighborhood of thirty-five to forty million dollars. It's hard to build a new building now for less than four hundred dollars a square foot. Back in two thousand, you could build that building for a hundred and twenty-five dollars a square foot. That's how much, you know, it's jumping. Of course, everything prior to pand, the pandemic, you could have built that building for two hundred dollars a square foot. Construction basically since two thousand and nineteen, pretty much has doubled. Well, it's just everything else. Uh, you know, when you go to the grocery store, everything there is tripping or more. But, uh, I'd be glad to answer any questions, uh, if I can answer.
So my question I had is, I know on the, from the past, I guess, architect, what they, um, put out was there was a lot of issues with the fans on the roof. So are those fans and ventilation going to be redone? Because I know they were saying a lot of the condensation was on the window, but it was also the shower and the kitchen not getting proper ventilation.
That will be included in, that will be included in with the heating and air system to, to be able to pull more, more, um, condensation and moisture up to, you know, to the ceiling and to the, the building and go out into air. Yeah, that will be part of it.
Any other question?
Thank you.
The next item is, um, asset management.
For status, report on asset management. We have Pine, Clyde, Lakota, ninety-seven point zero six percent occupancy. Churchill Apartments, a hundred percent occupancy. However, we do know a lot of our units at Churchill are in mod. Old Land, you're at eighty-seven point five percent. Wabley, you're at one hundred percent. Regentland Apartments, ninety-eight percent. Parkview Plaza, ninety-eight percent. Creekside Villa, um, all those units are also in mod. That's why we get that a hundred percent there. Scattered Sites, you're at ninety-nine point thirty-three percent. Pine Acres, ninety percent. jail Smith, a hundred percent. East Crest, ninety-four percent. And Scattered Sites Two is a hundred percent. Overall public housing occupancy year to date is ninety-seven point five three percent. Pelican House, ninety-five point nine six percent. Greg Avenue, ninety-seven point sixty-two percent. McCullough Cross, ninety-eight or eighty-one percent. Magowan Common, ninety-six point forty-three percent.
I have a question.
Yes ma'am.
I see like there's McCullough Cross and Greg Avenue Apartments.
Yes ma'am.
Are over, what's it say, over, um, not over budget, but it's over for the month. What does that mean?
Um, basically that, uh, you would find that.
Just try to type that out, okay.
So if there was, uh, if y'all would like, um, Mr. Genard Smalls would give a brief update on the HCD program.
Uh, good morning to the board of vendors.
Good morning.
And, uh, the staff here at the Housing Authority of Florence. Uh, my name is Genard Smalls and I'm the supervisor for the, uh, empty dwelling program and the Housing Choice Voucher. Within our program, we assist individuals who qualified by them and their families with a voucher to assist them in locating affordable housing or in covered areas that we, uh, that are included in Florence, Patrico, Effernham and Tennessee. Those are the areas that we work within. Uh, recently, the Housing Authority of Florence opened a waiting list and took approximately seven hundred and nine applications. Sending appointment letters to have the new applicants complete their application in a fully timely manner. We are currently serving approximately five hundred and sixty-five participants. Programs that are offered, Housing Choice, Housing Choice Voucher, HCD, Veteran Affair Supportive Housing, BASF, Project Base Voucher, PBB, located at the Magowan Community, I mean Commons, tax credit property. Moving forward, our goal is to complete the full application for the individuals waiting to receive assistance and to bring the department current after a big turnover.
Maybe I missed, let me ask you a question. Seven hundred and nine applications you took, right? We took, right?
Yes ma'am.
Dates. So out of that seven hundred and nine, how many were placed so far?
Uh, five hundred.
And sixty-five?
Yes.
I just want to know that I hear it right. That's good.
Placed or?
Placed or?
Responded?
Responded.
Respond, okay, all right.
But not placed in apartments or houses or anything?
Some of them are, and we're still placing.
Do you know about approximately how many have we actually put in the housing?
I can come back at another time to give you an update.
Okay, no problem. No problem. Thank you. Good report.
If y'all want to hear about, um, I know Casey was prepared to, um, tell y'all about ADP if y'all wanted to hear that.
Yeah, that's good.
Yes.
Yes.
We want to hear it, yes. Good, thank you.
Good morning.
Come on in.
Uh, we have started with ADP. I want to say probably since February, March, we've been working with them, implementing, uh, their HR comprehensive package. So they're going to be taking and, um, electronifying our timestamps, PTO, discipline actions, personnel forms. Anything that HR touches, it will be in a will have software that is all handled by ADP and it's cloud based. So as long as you have internet, you can access it. Um, this will allow all of our employees to download the app on their phone or have access on their desktop to be able to clock in, clock out, to be able to manage that time more efficiently, as well as being able to get away from so much paper, having those PTO forms automatically sent to their supervisors, having everything, um, easily, easily flowed to, from employee all the way up to executive management.
Could you tell me about, um, the clock in and clock out? You said the radius, the radius you have to be?
Yes, so it is based on, uh, it's what is called geofencing. So when an employee becomes within, I think it's five hundred feet from the URL that they clock into, then they'll be able to clock in. So it will not allow employees to clock in from their residence or from their vehicles. They have to be physically on the site to be able to clock in as well as clock out. And, um, if you have a phone, you can do it on your phone. Otherwise, it would be on your desktop.
So URL will be where?
URL.
In their, at their computers?
Yes, the URL is the website that they go on to. They'll go to ADP workforce and they'll have a link to be able to save it to their desktop. And they'll open it, be able to clock in and then be able to start work. And then they'll clock in and out for lunch periods as well. Um, it will automatically calculate their PTO, accumulate their PTO, put it over to their stick bank. Um, they can choose to withdraw their PTO and put it a request to the supervisor. And right now it takes, you know, about four or five hands before that process is complete. It takes payroll roughly three working days out of, um, you know, the week to complete payroll. So out of three days currently to do payroll, it'll shrink down to about twenty minutes. And out of, um, the PTO, it will just expedite all processes when it comes to anything personnel.
Casey, let me ask you this, um, do we, do, if, can someone clock in for someone else? I mean, is it possible?
No, they all have their own usernames. They all have their own passwords. And actually, once you clock in, ADP sends you an email then. So it's got the double, the two factor authentication. So once you clock in, then it sends you a code. You put in that code and then you're into ADP. ADP's security systems are extensive. Uh, the same contact that managers and supervisors have are different from the employees. They have their contact, we have a contact just to keep everything separate so that, um, the wrong people are talking to the wrong person.
So all you guys do is just put it in the computer and ADP does everything else? Is that it? Or the staff do their own?
So the staff will clock in, the staff will clock out. When it comes to, um, how often we meet with ADP, I, I meet with them about three times a week roughly for the implementation process to give them our roles.
Not clocking in, clocking out, I'm, I'm into that. I'm telling you, just ADP does everything for HR, right?
Yes ma'am.
So, um, save my time. I want to take off like my vacation next week. So do I enter my own time?
You do, but it gets a request to the supervisor for it to be approved. The supervisor has to approve it.
So what's your role in it?
So my role, I oversee the ADP system and the software program in itself. Um, I will be trained on how to train our managers for them to us work down to employees. And I will also, um, serve as liaison from us to ADP if there's any type of software issue, um, if we want to go further in their services. Um, what they can offer us is very wide. We're using a portion of it right now. However, ADP can, it can run almost the whole corporation. Now, housing might be a little bit different, you know, for all of our programs. But when it comes to, uh, the day-to-day operations of just basic business, ADP will, will take care of all that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Yeah, she's doing finance.
Okay.
Um, the next item on the agenda is contract maintenance.
Uh, yes, I'd start off, uh, updating you on, uh, Churchill. Up under the emergency grant, there was thirty-five units out of the hundred and sixty completed where the plumbing was taken out and all new plumbing put in. Yeah. And, uh, so right now we have four that we just signed a contract on, uh, a couple of days ago. And the reason we went ahead and moved to do those four is because those four, the bottom level, the concrete in the units had been already cut out and the water box that goes on the outside, that had already been did and tidied in. So we decided to go ahead and, and, and get bids and, and we got bids and we're going to have more of those four out. Now, we have a, a contract with Brownstone to, to handle moving forward with the, uh, sewer and water for, for Churchill and Dizzy Galas. And where they're at right now, because we have, let me back up. We don't have a contract because contract's not been signed. We've awarded, we sent them an award letter and I talked with them a couple of days ago. And the reason they've not, uh, produced their contract for us to fill over their contract is because they was working with the previous architects to get approval that it was all right for them to use the blueprints that they had already drawn. And when I talked with him a couple of days ago, he said that they finally got that approval. So they would be submitting, we submitted to them the documents that need to be in the AIA contract that HUD requires. So they would be drafting the contract, sending it to us for us to review and then, uh, get signed. So we're probably looking somewhere around three point six million dollars to finish Dizzy Galas. That's basically contracting out of labor only because we, we have the materials, um, that, you know, from the other contracting company that they had purchased. We have the materials. And I think there is enough materials to do both sides, uh, Churchill and Dizzy. So what we will be contracting out of basically is the room. And for Churchill, it probably will be around somewhere around thirty thousand dollars per unit. It's just a matter of how much funds we, we can actually put our hands on as to how many we'll be able to do once we, you would be at stake. And the same way with Dizzy, um, there was, uh, twenty-one completed up in Dizzy. So at least a hundred and three to go. And so you're roughly three billion dollars there to, to finish that side. And of course, Dizzy's, uh, funds is a little tighter in Florence. So we know upfront, we won't be able to contract all of them out. But the way, the way the bids will be, the bids will be how much you're going to charge for the one bedroom, two bedroom, three and so forth. So, and if we can only do forty units this year, then, you know, that's how many we do. So that's where we're at with, with that. Before we move on to the others, any questions on that?
Yes. And I don't want to appear, uh, not knowing what I'm talking about, but I don't. That's why I'm asking the questions. I understand that Churchill is under review for RAD modifications. Okay. And you just gave us a total of three point six million dollars to do. What we're doing with the plumbing system and all that? Why are we doing all of this and we're going to do this differently in the next, what, six months or a year?
That's a very good question. Very good question. Um, what we, what we're trying to do is, um, we had, um, we had some of the apartments that, that started. And so we want to try to, and we got material for, and so we want to try to get that finished. But, um, we do have to, you know, we are applying for RAD, you know, so we have to kind of work two plans. And we're applying for RAD and we hope we get it. If we get it, that will kind of change things. But right now, we gotta get this first to get it, get our plans in place to where if that doesn't work out, we can still have a plan and move forward to get all those, um, apartments repaired and up and up and, uh, online. So, um, we, we will know at some point whether our RAD application is approved. And once we know that, you know, we'll have these plans in place, but then we'll have to make some adjustments then. But the, the end goal is to make sure that every one of those apartments is up and running and at high quality standard. And so we're not going to leave anything to chance. It's going to get done one way or the other. We hopefully RAD will be the one, but if not, we got this other stuff back.
I close on reaching, getting the apartments that we are, that we are working on, getting them to be up to, um, ready for occupancy.
Uh, right now, we have thirty units over there that's in mod. They're sitting there, it's plumbing, there's nothing to do though. They're sitting there, and the plumbing is not going to deal on. Time's running out, I think that the next one is, is in July. When I say time's running out,
We're looking at an efficiency here.
Well, no, not, not that, that's true. You can only keep a unit in mod for two years, so you're receiving the subsidy from HUD when the unit's in mod, in mod. But when the two-year mark's up, then you stop receiving your subsidy for that unit. So we're sitting there right now with thirty units that's in mod, it's empty. So if our time runs out and we've not got them back online, then we stop getting the money each month for those units.
And my last question is, and probably with Dr. Bradley too, um, the apartments that are being just under modification and whatnot, they're offline. How secure are those apartments for, as far as people getting into them? Gang-like activities? And what, now what's security on these apartments that are being renovated?
Well, we, we do have a good camera system, a camera system. It does deter, but it doesn't stop. Now, we, we do have two apartments, two units over in, uh, Churchill, it's been vandalized. And, um, because they're sitting there empty. And one of them,
Is that those two because of modification?
Yes. And, uh, matter of fact, we have someone in there working today to try to, to, to get them back ready so we can move someone in. Because we didn't want to get it ready before proper the manager had a, a person to go in. Because, you know, we get vandalized again. The other, and the second thing we're doing, we've already contacted the, uh, tsunami that operates the camera systems that we have. And there's a camera over there, and the playground needs to prime. The camera's up too far, so it's not picking up the back of those units that comes, that comes sound.
Yeah, that's what I, I mean, some of the people have said.
Yeah, there, that camera's going to be moved from where it's located, it's going to be moved back toward, back to the fence line, so it'll be able to pick up those units. Uh, once we do that, then we'll be able to see, you know, if somebody vandalized.
Uh, residents have expressed a concern for their safety because of that type of thing going on. And, and I'm for all the residents in that particular area. It does create a scene for unhealthy environment right now. And, um, people have said they don't feel safe. So those were the reasons for my questions.
Right, and, and, and those two units being vandalized, she has a, she has a resident ready to go in one of them. So we, that's what we're doing, is getting that one ready. So hopefully, once we get that one in there, you know, have a stop. You know, we don't have proof, we have, um, some folks, some residents out there have said that they, they know who was doing it. You know, some child in certain apartments, but once we get our camera moved back,
Is someone working on that now?
Yes ma'am, if, I talked with the company, uh, Monday, uh, no, back up, it was last Thursday, and put in an order with them to move that camera back. Hopefully, that's going to be done next week.
All right, thank you.
My Churchill and Dizzy Gillespie, I'll go on. We, um,
One thing I want to say, before the Churchill and Dizzy Gillespie contract, because we're in the Rad version, if we can just table that, not vote on that particular item until we come back out of executive session, I think there's still got to be some question of clarity with the executive director as to kind of which direction we going in. And then we come back, we'll vote on that.
And we don't, we don't have to, we don't have to vote on it?
No, I mean to accept his.
Oh, his report?
His report.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, the, uh,
And let me be clear, I don't want to say accept it, because if there's some change, we can't accept it if there needs to be changed, you know, in the report.
Yeah, yeah, and, and the thing about it, if, if we're moving, you know, if we, if we go out for bids, and say, we, we, the thirty that's empty, we do them, and get them back online, and then the Rad takes place, then, and then we stop, that contract just doesn't go forward. Because the contract's not going to be for a certain dollar amount per se, it's going to be by unit. So that way, we're not locked in to having to, we're there contracted to having to do all of it, you know what I'm saying? So if Rad takes place, then we, we, we just stop. In Florence, we, um, for the month of April, we did, uh, for Scavenger Side Housing, we had to do three contracts for flooring, one for roofing. And we did twenty different units. We had to, uh, replace some siding on because, uh, it was blown off in different places. So that's basically what we did for the month of, uh, April in Florence. Up in Charole, we had eighty-nine units altogether that we did, uh, vinyl siding and soffit on. And when, when I say we did it, it would be like, you know, this unit here, you got three pieces of siding that needs to be replaced. Or, oh, this unit over here, the soffit on the overhang is blown off, two pieces blown off. So it's like that, so it would be eighty-nine different individual units. So we got all of the vinyl siding and soffit squared away up in, uh, Charole. Uh, and, um, in Marlborough, we did two roofs, put two new roofs on up there. It was, uh, was bad, we replaced them, and they have, we're doing those two, theirs is in pretty good shape now. We didn't have anything major over in those contracts in the month of May.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is finance.
Come on in. Come on in too.
And reporting on March four, by Florence, firstly, for their enrollment. Overall, most of the income items have been above budget all through the year. One exception has been, we do have that particular item from, it's called Transplant Capital Fund, where every year we're allowed to take X amount of dollars. It's actually, um, ten percent of a capital fund grant can be designated for operations. Having drawn from the twenty twenty-three grant yet because of the Churchill contract issue with the super grant. We're just debating whether to leave it in, in the capital fund and use those, those funds instead of moving to operations. If we used from operations, we'd have to use that, so it's almost the same difference, but, um, I've been in contact with Bosco and I've discussed it. So that's one reason why income's a little bit lower at this time of the year, we just haven't drawn that fund yet, and it was budgeted. Our expenses in the month of March. Actually, for the year-to-date, um, that lost a hundred and nine thousand dollars. Most of that is due to the fact that having to relocate Creekside people, so we had to deal with that this year. And then also, not having the income from the cap fund grant yet. Some items that are over budgeted and have been, um, some of these originally, the actual budget item for it was not good. It was underestimated, I'll say. Firstly, insurance has been increased so much this year, I mean, it's, y'all probably even know it's personal. It's just been a big item that has all increases over forty percent. We did redirect administrative salaries from the business activities, or COCC, um, in the year. Uh, other things, garbage expense has been higher. But overall, um, for the month of March, we basically broke even. There was some extra revenue item, we did have some repairs that you made, there was a fire at the nine oh four building. It cost forty grand, um, we have not received the insurance proceeds for that yet. Any particular questions about the low rent side?
Does it normally take that long to receive, um, for the turnaround, once you have an incident, a fire, whatever, for the insurance company to pay back?
Well, it, it all depends on how long they, the way that they operate, they don't send you a check until you complete your job. Uh, unlike your personal house insurance where they send you a check upfront. So it just all depends, you know, how long it takes. Forty thousand dollar job, it may take time we get quotes on it and all, and get the job did. You're looking probably forty-five, sixty days.
Oh, that's the reason, okay. I thought they just was lagging and not sending it. I understand now.
They're good about sending you a check once you get through and send them something showing that you're quitting.
Showing that, right, that you got real people in this real, okay, got it, gotcha.
Judy, um, Judy's last day with us is on May the thirtieth. And we want to thank her for all her service to the Housing Authority for forty years, and so,
Long time.
And, um, so we wish her a very happy retirement, and we thank her for all she's done all these years.
I don't understand why she's leaving.
Thank you for your service, Mrs. Judy.
Thank you, thank you.
The next item on the agenda, um, is executive report. And I think basically they've kind of, staff has given us a report, so we're going to, um, just kind of tape an executive report and move into executive session. But before we go to, into executive session, I want to remind the board members and the public that, uh, we decided at the beginning of the year to move three of our board meetings to the afternoon to be able to serve the working people. So our June meeting, which is June the eighteenth, will be at six o'clock instead of ten o'clock in the morning. All right? So I need a motion to go into executive session to confer, not with the board attorney, but to confer with Dr. Bradley about personnel matters, for start to Sockalot of Section thirty-four seventy-eight, one, and eight-two.
From who do we go into executive session? To confer with Dr. Brad in reference to, um, personnel issues?
I second, one of the three.
You're right, this is the move in properly second. I'm at this time, we're going to, going to executive session. Staff and board, I want to present you a gift in celebration of your forty years of service at the Housing Authority, thank you for all this.
Thank y'all so much.
So you can get a picture up? Huh? Yeah, somebody got, somebody going to take a picture? I want to do it one time. I wish we could get more in here. Come on, let's, let's stand here. Everybody, we can get everybody, you can stand right here, I stand right here. And then that way you can get, you can get all the board members in here.
Oh wait, let me take off my mask, so I can smile, show my pretty smile.
All right, thank you, all right. I need a motion to adjourn. Yes, I need a motion to adjourn. I need a motion to adjourn.
How moved are we adjourned in the Housing Authority meeting?
I stuck in the motion.
You're right, it's probably move a second, and the meeting is adjourned.
So she's going, she's going, you know, today, certified today. You want to go back? You want to go back? You want to go back?
Yeah.
Douglas was our chairperson. Boys, and I, I got on the board this year, so let's, let's, let's just get a date. Yes, sir, because I can, if you don't make a date, they'll make it no ever. You're going to ask, can you do it on the thirtieth, or that's too early, you got to get, you got to get the plan.
Get somebody.